We're pleased this evening to have with us Pastor Dennis Wagner of the Troy Church of the Nazarene to provide an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Pastor. Would you come forward?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being in such a great country. We thank you with all of its beauty and might and benefits. You have chosen to have us live here and have all the blessings of this wonderful country. We ask for your divine wisdom this evening, the spirit of cooperation, continued blessing in not only our nation but this city of Troy that we love. We ask that you would hear the instructions of David, the psalmist that said, "We lift our eyes unto the hills from whence cometh our help, and our help does come from the Lord." Give guidance, Father God, for you are all wisdom and all-knowing. Help our Washington leadership, those that rule and direct our lives from there. Also, protect all the men and women in harm's way this evening, protecting our freedoms here. Protect our police officers and firefighters and our first responders. And then, Lord, would you give this council that leads this city decisions, Lord, that will benefit and be pleasing to you. Father God, accept our thanks and our gratitude. We ask these favors in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Nice having you here with us this evening. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howlerak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Form present. This evening, we begin with some special presentations and recognitions, and so -- yes?
Could I move the resolution to excuse Councilwoman Beltrameany?
I'm sorry, yes. For the previous meeting, yes, we have a resolution to do excuse, yes.
Okay.
Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilmember Beltrameany at the special city council meeting of June 27, 2011, due to being out of the county.
Support? Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by the Chair, that we excuse Councilmember Robin Beltrameany from the special meeting of June 27, due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes?
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howlerak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Curwen?
No.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excuse me for the error. I was thinking about absences from this meeting when I went right to the special recognitions. We have State Representative Marty Nolanberg, who is with us from Lansing, of course, Troy resident, and represents us in Lansing, and he is going to give us a legislative update. Welcome.
You bet. Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to kind of bring you up to speed about what's happening in Lansing. The last time I was here, I believe it was the end of February, and at that time, I presented to you the proposal that Governor Snyder had offered up in his state, on the State Address, and I'm here to kind of report back to you as to what has happened to that budget since then. And, you know, I could spend a lot of time on this. I know I'm limited, so I'm going to try to condense it as quickly as I can for you. I'm just going to summarize it in two ways. One, give you the budget update as passed, and then, secondly, talk a little bit about the reforms that we passed as well. I want to point out that when I came here back in late February, the state of Michigan had a $1.7 billion budget deficit, certainly a daunting task, and we also had over $40 billion of unfunded healthcare and pension cost. That's a tall order, and I'm glad to say that, I'm proud to say, that the budget is done. I mean, it is completed. Before June 1st, that was the goal, that was the target date by everybody in the legislature, something that hadn't been done in over 30 years, getting a budget done on June 1st. It's historic in that sense. I think it will provide the certainty that all of our stakeholders need in our state, local units of government, school districts, the folks that are receiving the benefit from the state of Michigan, our taxpayers in the state of Michigan, our families in the state of Michigan, they should feel proud that we have a budget done early. Now they know what is in the budget, and they can live with what's there. Just a couple of things I want to point out. The budget is structurally sound. It's two years. There's no accounting gimmicks. There's no shifting of dollars. There's no one-time funds. It's balanced, structurally balanced, for two years. We also put money in a rainy fund, something that we hadn't done in a long, long time. As a side humor joke, we got this budget done in the middle of the day, something that had never been done in the four and a half years I've been in the legislature. So, we were all wide awake when we passed this budget. A couple of things I want to point out, a couple of highlights. The Medicaid portion of the budget, this is money that goes to healthcare towards poor people, was held harmless. Probably the biggest controversy that we faced was the K-12 budget. As I reported to you back in February, the proposal that Snyder offered was a 4.9% cut. At the end of the day, the legislature agreed to a 1.4% cut. I think that's a reasonable measure, given the limited funds that the state of Michigan has. I know that, you know, the whole issue of K-12 and how some of that money was used for higher ed and community colleges, it would have put a much bigger hole had we not done what we did. And I think at the end of the day, a 1.4% cut is reasonable. I think it shares sacrifice as well. Moving on to the best practices piece, I also want to keep in mind that the goal of the budget is to get the state of Michigan toward a AAA bond rating. I think you understand that on the city council, how important it is to have a AAA bond rating. If we can get a AAA bond rating, it lowers the cost of borrowing money, lowers the cost for taxpayers. So, that's the goal in the budget, and I think we're headed in the right direction. As I mentioned, I want to talk a little bit about reforms and best practices. Some of these things you may not be aware of. We did put a cap on welfare reform to 48 months. If you're an able-bodied individual under the current law today, you're limited to 48 months. Before this law went into effect, you could collect cash assistance forever, just because. And we put a stop to that, which puts us in line with other Midwest states. So, we're not doing something that's drastic, that's out of the norm, this is reasonable compared to Indiana, Ohio, Illinois. We closed a loophole that allowed college kids to receive food stamps, also known as the bridge card, and that's a ridiculous, why are college kids collecting food stamps and cashing them in for beer and, you know, things like that? So, we put a stop to that. Probably the biggest reform is the PA 312 reform, and this is huge. This is a debate that's been going on for 30-plus years, and we got it done, and you should feel proud of that. We have language in there that would require local ability to pay, giving local units the ability to pay provision in there, something that you wanted. This legislation had bipartisan support. Michigan Municipal League was on board, Police Officers Association was on board, firefighters were on board, everybody was on board. So, it's a huge piece of legislation, and you should feel very proud that we got that done. Project labor agreements, governors about to sign that into law, that should help you as well, that should help lower the cost for some of your construction projects that you guys put out. We are about to eliminate minimum staffing requirement. The Senate is about to concur on a House bill on that. Actually, the Senate bill, House passed it, they just have to concur. We shouldn't be basing our budget based on having, you know, so many people on staff. It should be based on what you need, not just to fulfill the position. Huge, huge reform there. Urban cooperation, we're very close to getting that done. This would allow locals, obviously, to consolidate with other municipalities, and we're very close in getting that done, hoping to get it done before I came here today, but we're very, very close. In fact, I wanted to check with the bill sponsor before I came here and asked him, and he said, Marty, we're very close. So, hopefully, we'll see that done next time I come. We eliminated the lifetime healthcare benefit. That's actually, the House passed that. The Senate has to pass that as well. Let's see, hard cap, I think I need to spend a little bit of time on the healthcare as it relates to our public employees, our teachers, and ourselves as well. Under legislation, that was passed just before we left, something that the governor will sign the next day or so. Actually, the Senate has to concur, but the agreement was that they would concur with the House recommendation. Since we, what the hard cap is, it would require that healthcare costs can't exceed a certain dollar limit. You have families, you have couples, you have singles, you have single people with children, there's going to be limits as to how much health insurance that the local unit of government or school district, or myself for that matter, can be. In other words, if you're a family, the limit's $15,500, no more than that can be spent on healthcare. And so, this should help drive, rein in the cost of healthcare. There is an opt-out provision that you should be aware of. If you can get a two-third vote from the city council here, and you don't want to do that, you can do that, but I think it's something that is a good thing. You can also, with a simple majority, go to an 80/20 type of format, so if you don't like the hard cap and you want the 20% contribution by the employee, that's an option that you have available as well. And I'm sort of condensing this because it's a huge piece of legislation, and very huge. Couple of things, a couple, final things I'll just mention, you know, there are some teacher, there are some reforms in education. One of the bills that I'm proud of would stop the automatic pay increases that teachers would get when there's no contract in place. We have a situation in the state of Michigan where 30% of our school districts have not had a contract two years or more, so there's been no incentive for the teachers to negotiate because they're getting automatic step pay increases. So, my bill would basically put a stop to this, a huge reform, and hopefully, it'll force, I think it's in everybody's best interest to have a contract in place. It doesn't seem to make sense to me that people are getting pay increases without a contract, and so this, hopefully, will get all parties together to agree upon a contract. Teacher tender reform, we've been trying to change this for many, many, many years, and the governor's about to sign it. Bipartisan support, it's huge, and so that's on its way as well. I guess just to conclude, I mean, I talked about a lot of things, I left some things out, but the bottom line is we can't continue to do things the way we've been doing them. If you want change, you know, you've got to make changes. You've got to make some decisions that are not what we've done in the past, and we've taken on a lot, and, I mean, you should feel proud of the legislature for making these kinds of changes and getting our state, you know, in the right direction. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for?
I can.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I've got a question.
Mr. Zerlike does.
Marty, as you know, there's a new formula for state revenue sharing. Part of that is predicated on best practices for municipalities, and I think the way the Act currently reads is that it's from a certain point in time forward, and when there's a city like Troy that has engaged in best practices for decades, we don't think we should be penalized when compared to other cities that may just be now starting best practices. Can I rely on your assistance in trying to ensure that when it comes time for the revenue sharing formula, that we can include best practices in Troy that are prior to that point forward time?
Yeah, absolutely. You've got my commitment there, John, and I would be happy to sit down with you, and we can discuss this, and that makes sense to me.
Sure. It would help our residents and taxpayers as well.
Absolutely. Anything to help the taxpayers.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, it is my pleasure, on behalf of counsel, to go down to the front to present some very special service commendations. You can always tell when it's a very special evening to give accolades and commendations to people that have served for a long time, because not only do their family members come, but their friends and colleagues come too. So, that shows the support and love and care that these folks that were presenting the awards tonight, they deserve this attention from not only their friends and colleagues and family and the council, but from the entire community. And so, I'll begin, and the first service commendation is for Rod Bowensepp. So, if he will come forward, please. Whereas Rod Bowensepp began his career with the city of Troy in May of 1973 and worked in engineering, water, and assessing departments. He joined Fire Station 3 as a volunteer firefighter in February 1976, where he served as a lieutenant, captain, and assistant chief. And whereas the city of Troy is honored to have had Rod as an employee for 38 years, he started his career service with the fire department in 1987, when he was promoted to Staff Lieutenant, working in the Fire Prevention Division, where he served as an inspector and a plan reviewer. And whereas Rod served as the Fire Department Emergency Management Coordinator and developed the first emergency management plan for the city, and Rod also was a member of the Special Response Unit and a member of the Fire Investigation Team. Whereas Rod's most recent position was in Fire Operations, where he assisted in training and developed the Probationary Firefighter's Task Book. He received numerous awards and many thank you letters, letters of recognition from citizens and organizations. And whereas Rod retired from the city of Troy on February 16, 2011, after 38 years of dedicated service. Whereas Rod will now enjoy more time with his wife Mary, daughter Cheryl, son-in-law Denny, grandchild Eli, son Kurt, daughter-in-law Robin, and grandchildren Kaylee and Wyatt, daughter Teresa, son-in-law Pete, and new granddaughter due in November. Now therefore be it known that the city council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to Rod Bowensepp for his many contributions to the betterment of the city. Be it further known that the city council of the city of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Rod during his retirement years. And this is presented this 11th day of July 2011, signed by myself and all council members. Thank you. The next service commendation is for Keith Lenderman. So, if Keith would come forward, please. Whereas Keith Lenderman started with the Troy Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter in October of 1975 at Station 4, where he served as lieutenant and captain. Keith transferred to Station 5 in March of 1984, and whereas the city of Troy is honored to have had Keith and his employee for 31 years. He started his career service with the fire department in 1980 as Staff Lieutenant. He served as a fire inspector, fire investigator, and fire instructor, and also specialized in plan review and construction inspection. And whereas Keith was an original member of the Special Response Unit and served as a leader of the unit, in October 2007, he was promoted to Division Assistant Chief assigned to the Operations Division. And whereas Keith has been instrumental in developing and enhancing department training programs and computer applications. Keith served as a lead investigator for the fire department and is a court-qualified expert witness. He has numerous awards and a file full of thank you letters and letters of recognition. Whereas Keith retired from the city of Troy on January 5, 2011, after 31 years of dedicated service. And whereas Keith will now enjoy more time with his wife Diane, his daughter Janie, and son-in-law Adam, grandson Zachary and Ethan, daughter Kristen and son-in-law Sean, and granddaughters Molly and Matilda. Now therefore be it known that the city council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to Keith Lenderman for many contributions to the betterment of the city. And be it further known that the city council of the city of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Keith during his retirement years. Presented the 11th day of July 2011, signed by myself and all members of council. Would you like to say a few words? You would? He said he wanted to say a few words, but it was just thank yous. Next, we're going to present a service commendation for, to Joe Lagarde. And I see that Joe's family is here. Yes, as they always are. Whereas Joe Lagarde began his career with the city of Troy on July 17, 1976, as a part-time weekend mechanic, and on November 15, 1978, he was hired full-time as MSED Equipment Serviceman. And whereas the city of Troy is honored to have had Joe as an employee for 35 years, he was promoted to MSE-F Trade Specialist 1 on December 3, 1984, and once again promoted to MSEG Trade Specialist 2 on November 3, 1986. And whereas Joe was promoted 10/20/2000 to Field Supervisor on October 28, 2000, where he was served, has served until his retirement with the utmost dedication and loyalty. Joe's expertise is in welding and fabricating tools and automotive parts. He always stepped up to every challenge within the Fleet Division, fully researching the situations to come up with workable and cost-efficient solutions. And whereas Joe's dedication to the city of Troy has been outstanding, both with the Fleet Division and as a volunteer firefighter at Station 6 since 1996. And whereas Joe retired from the city of Troy on June 30, 2011, after more than 35 years of dedicated service. Whereas Joe will now enjoy more time with his wife of 31 years Cindy, son Joe, also a Troy firefighter, daughter-in-law Stephanie, and grandson Brandon, sons Ed and Nick, daughter Jennifer, son-in-law Ben, and grandson Benjamin, as well as find time for camping, four-by-four off-roading, working on restoring classic cars, and driving his own classic 1970 Chevelle SS. Now therefore be it known that the city council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express its appreciation to Joe Lagarde for many contributions to the betterment of the city. Be it further known that the city council of the city of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Joe during his retirement years. Presented this 11th day, July 2011, signed by myself and all members of council. Sounds like you're going to be just as busy.
Busy.
Busy. Our next service commendation is for Sam Lamorato. And you see, I had to put my glasses on for this one, because there's so much on here. It's really small print. Whereas after graduating from the Motec Automotive Education Center, Sam Lamorato began his career with the city of Troy in September of 1974 as a service person, quickly moved through the roles of mechanic, leader, heavy equipment mechanic, and foreman. In 1982, he was promoted to his current position as Superintendent of Fleet Maintenance. And whereas the city of Troy has been honored to have Sam as a dedicated employee. The city of Troy has a population of 80,980 and encompasses 36 square miles. Sam oversees a fleet operation with over 500 pieces of equipment, including 90 police vehicles, 36 fire apparatus, and 56 pieces of snow removal equipment. Troy's Fleet Division maintains a two-shift operation in two locations with 17 employees. Whereas Sam has been an active member of the American Public Works Association since 1982, and is the Michigan Chapter American Public Works Association Co-Chair of Education. He also founded the Southeast Oakland County Motor Pool Association in 1983, was president of the Southeast Oakland County Superintendent's Association in 2000, and Equipment Maintenance Council Vice President for 2001 and 2002. And whereas nationally, Sam has been appointed the APWA Fleet Services Committee Chairperson for 2002 through 2004, and was appointed to the Chrysler Fleet Advisory Council in 2004. Sam received the Michigan APWA 2005 Professional Manager of the Year Fleet Management Award in recognition for his outstanding career service achievements of both sector fleet management, operation, and maintenance, and for exceptional performance in fleet maintenance education. And whereas the city of Troy Fleet Division was named the third-best fleet in North America in October 2006, and Sam received the APWA Certified Public Fleet Professional Certification in September of 2007. Whereas the city of Troy Fleet Division was named the top 20 of the 100 Best Fleet in North America in June 2008 and '09, and received the Blue Seal of Excellence from the National Institute of Automotive Service Excellence 2004 through 2010, the only municipal repair facility in Michigan to receive the award. Whereas 2010 and 2011 were monumental years for Sam Lamorato and Troy's Fleet Division. The city of Troy's fleet was named Top 100 Best Fleet in North America in June 2010 and in August 2010. Sam received the APWA's Professional Manager of the Year Public Fleet. Sam received the APWA's Professional Manager of the Year Public Fleet. In April of 2011, Sam was named as a top-three finalist for the Government Fleet Magazine Public Sector Fleet Manager of the Year for the whole nation. In June of 2011, Sam was named Government Fleet Magazine Public Sector Fleet Manager of the Year, and Troy's fleet was named the top one-hundred best fleet in North America. No small accomplishments here, folks. These are huge. And whereas Sam retired from the city of Troy on June 30, 2011, after thirty-eight years of dedicated service. And whereas Sam will now enjoy more time with Meg, his wife of thirty-six years, son Sam, daughter Amanda, son-in-law Greg, grandchildren Grace and Owen, daughter Sarah, son-in-law David, grandchildren Alex and Amelia, as well as find time for restoring his 1966 Ford Mustang, traveling, fishing, and home improvements. Now therefore be it known, the city council of the city of Troy takes this opportunity to express to Sam Lamorato for his many contributions to the betterment of the city. And be it further known, the city council of the city of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Sam during his retirement years. Presented the eleventh day of July 2011, signed by myself and all members of council. Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the award that Sam received from the Government Fleet Magazine's Public Sector Fleet Manager of the Year in 2011. And it's our pleasure here at the city to present it again to Sam. And in addition, the, and you have some people here for this. Remember that Sam always remembered that he's part of a team, even though he was the leader. And this recognizes the city of Troy as the 2011 elite fleet, fleet on the one-hundred best fleets in the nation. And so who should I present this to, to you again? All of them together?
I'd just like to thank everyone, and thank those wonderful staff that I have behind me here, as well as city management and the city council for their years of support. This wouldn't have been possible without such a wonderful staff and a very, very talented staff. With this staff, we will keep the city rolling forward with our vehicles on a readiness alert to serve you as residents and our customers in the city of Troy. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good job, Joe.
I see that Sam's dad is here also, and has quite a accomplished recognition of his service over the years, too. Who else do you have here?
My father, my mother, and my wife, my two nephews from either side of the country right now flew in for this, and my sister and my brother-in-law are here as well. And with the previous public works coordinator, Don Spurz, in the back, if I'm forgetting, oh, Tim Richnick is here.
Yes.
And Vicki, who was our recycling coordinator, is here also. Thank you very much.
And they're all very proud of you, and rightly so. Thank you so much. If members of, that were here for the special presentations feel that they have other things they wish to do, they're free to leave or to stay. It is their decision. We appreciate all of you coming for our very special night. When we move on here, we have a public hearing this evening, and Brett Zavodan will present for staff, and it is a rezoning application on the east side of Stevenson, north of Fourteen Mile, at 466 Stevenson Highway in Section 35, from RC Research Center to OM Office Mixed Use. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I will try to keep this brief. I know there's a busy agenda ahead of us. The, as you indicated, Madam Mayor, the applicant seeks to rezone the subject parcel from RC Research Center to OM Office Mixed Use. There's an aerial photo on the wall. It shows the property as it looks today. There's a vacant light industrial building that sits on the property. The next aerial has a zoning district layer overlaid on top of the aerial. And you see the subject property is owned RC, as I indicated. Property to the north and to the west is owned OM, which is what the applicant, the zoning the applicant seeks. And the application indicates that the applicant intends to develop a Holiday Inn Express hotel and suites on the site, once the property is rezoned. The existing RC district permits a wide variety of office and light industrial uses. However, it does not permit lodging establishments, hotels. The OM district, which the applicant seeks, also permits the same office and light industrial uses. However, it also permits a wider variety of uses, including lodging establishments. And lodging establishments in OM are permitted subject to special use approval. Therefore, if the property is rezoned, the applicant will be before the planning commission with an application for special use approval. The master plan, you can see at the bottom, and there's a sliver of pink. The master plan classifies this property as being in the smart zone land use category, and this category contemplates knowledge, economy uses, as well as supporting uses. Therefore, the rezoning is consistent with the master plan. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item, June 28, 2011, recommended approval of the rezoning. The rezoning is consistent with the general character of the area, and it's compatible with adjacent zoning districts. City management recommends approval of the rezoning application from RC Research Center to OM Office Mixed Use. That completes my brief presentation.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Zavodan at this time?
No.
Seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here on this item that wishes to speak in the public hearing on this item? On this item, Mr. Peters? Come forward to the mic.
As I understand it, is this the site here, or is it on Fourteen Mile Road?
No, the site is on Stevenson, north of Fourteen.
Right. Is that area, see, I was a little concerned about some of the empty buildings around here. I mean, some of the malls are kind of emptying out. And I was concerned of the environment around this area, and hopefully that they'd have a plan to integrate the environment with the building. That would be all that I would have.
And, Mr. Peters, the plans and the designs and everything is at the planning department. If you wish to look at those more fully, you may do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Beltarmini.
Clear as, the city is in receipt of a rezoning request from RC to OM file number Z-738, as demonstrated by the ordinance to amend Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy and as illustrated in the attached plat of survey. Therefore, be it resolved, the proposed zoning from RC to OM is hereby approved. Be it finally resolved, the zoning district map is hereby amended.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beltarmini, seconded by Councilman Hauerak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion of the motion? Seeing none, and hearing none, and Mrs. Bittner, may we have the vote?
Councilmember Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we're going to go to public comment, but before we do that, our rules provide, if there are fifteen or more people that sign up to speak, that we're allowed to suspend the rules to adjust the time. So I'll move that we suspend the rules at this time. Seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin. Discussion. The vote, Mrs. Bittner, on the suspension of rules?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Hauerak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltarmini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I move that we adjust the time length from five minutes to three minutes for public comments as per Rule 16 in our city council rules of procedure. Support. Move by the chair, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Discussion. The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Hauerak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltarmini?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Motion passes. Therefore, we'll proceed as we do when we have fifteen or more people sign up to speak. I'll call the first five names, and they can line up in the aisleway and the clock. Mrs. Stewart, will you adjust it to three? It's now on five. Okay, thank you. And as each person begins, and we'll start the clock. The first five people are, in this order, Craig Chamberlain, Dave Henderson, Janice Daniels, Carmen Johnson, and Marvin Reinhardt. Those folks would line up in that order, please. Mr. Chamberlain, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city management. A couple years ago, the Troy City Council passed an ordinance restricting the use of underground sprinkler systems to the hours of 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, not during the daytime. The intent was to reduce the peak usage, because peak usage is a factor in determining the cost of water service. The lower our peak usage, the lower our water rates. Well, I can drive down Big Beaver just about any day and see major businesses that are using their underground sprinkler systems. I also see this by businesses on other major roads and residences throughout the city. I just found out a few minutes ago, after I'd signed up to speak, that today the city issued a press release, reminding people about this water restriction. This was prompted by the fact that at, according to the release, at 6:00 AM, the city's peak hour usage was extremely close to the limit, and putting us at risk of increasing our water rates. I'm hopeful that this press release will increase compliance, but I have one other concern. It took this event of coming close to the limit to draw attention to the lack of compliance. I don't think it is a constructive use of city council time to pass ordinances that the city is not going to adequately communicate and enforce. When a government makes laws that are widely ignored, I'm concerned where that leads. That's my comment.
Thank you. And we'll address some of that in the response, Mr. Chamberlain, at the end, yes. Next, we have Dave Henderson.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. Sorry about the attire, I'm heading to a salt pugging. We don't need new taxes, we need new taxpayers. The people of Troy have been struggling for the last couple of years with loss of income and declining home values. Our commercial buildings have vacancy rates over 25%. We don't need new taxes, we need to fight business in Detroit, fill our empty commercial buildings to capacity, bringing new jobs to the city. Also sending the message to surrounding communities that Troy is the leader in good fiscal policy will make us again the go-to city for families looking for a great community to move to. We need a plan for that. All we've seen and heard at this council table for the last two years is tax this and tax that. Reducing expenses should be a continuous effort in good times or bad, and there's enough money in the fund balance to pay for the library for at least four years, even if the financial climate doesn't improve. And experts that our council and management team aren't consulting with are indicating that things are beginning to improve. My taxable value increased by $2,400 last week for 2011. How does that happen in such a bleak economy? You've spent more time selling the tax, the library tax, than you have trying to attract new businesses in Detroit. Tacom is a prime example of our city getting in its own way of business development in Troy. We have this very large government operation willing to fill a building and pay taxes here. All they wanted was a fence and a gate for security. They build military tanks. Our city told no on the fence, but you can bring gigantic boulders in and place them around the property for security. When I first saw it, I thought they were joking. If you drive by Fifteen Mile and John Iron and take a look, if it's not that perfect, if that's not the perfect example of government running amok, I don't know what is. We don't need any hurdles to be placed in front of incoming business development. The people of Troy feel a disconnect between us and this council with such a tax-and-spend mindset, and no vision for the city outside of millages. Vote no on this tax increase next week, or the next coming weeks, and let's get serious in November on who we elect for council and what they stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with your ballgame. Next, we'll have, we'll hear from Janice Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Janice Daniels, and I'd like to say that many people in this community are convinced that the city council is denying us the use of our own money that's already in your budget to keep our library open with no new taxes. In fact, we know that we could maintain five libraries with the amount of money that you have in the undesignated fund balance right now. You have to remember, that's our money, taken from the sweat of our brow, that's paying the government workers' salaries and pensions and perks and pleasures, and we're tired of these tax increase requests. Why don't you just admit that there are more favorable actual numbers than you estimated, and that we can keep our library open with no new taxes? That would be the easy way out for you. Done deal. You could heal this community and turn the focus on what your job really is, and that is to provide a framework in which the private sector can flourish, both in terms of competitive business growth opportunities, and in terms of getting out of our way, so we can ensure a vibrant community where people can attend to their own needs without being burdened with higher taxes in an economic downturn. But instead, because of the ideological blinders that this majority council is wearing, you would rather secretively shuffle numbers as if playing a shell game with us, and you divert attention away from the facts with your offhanded comments that insult the people who come before you and express observations that differ from your big government largesse. I know that we put your game plan at risk, I know that we've trumped your ace, so to speak, and now it seems like you must feel trapped or something, because even when you were presented with a budget plan proposed by Councilwoman Hauerak that would have given you an opportunity to save face, you voted it down without one minute of analysis, review, or debate. That's just bad management. Please stop playing games with our library. Please stop wasting our money on studies and surveys and reports and polls and community meetings where all the big government types go to regurgitate your half-truths and misconceptions to an unsure voting block. You're not playing fair. No matter how many people come up here tonight and cry about education or flowers, or how bad TCU is, the truth is that we all love education, we all love our city. And quite frankly, in this economic recession, we're not real worried about planting flowers in front of City Hall, we're more worried about homeowners and businesses being able to make their mortgage payments instead of giving you more money to waste and mismanage. And no matter how many big government groups come out and say that we should pay higher taxes, that just isn't true. I'm voting no on August 2nd, and I will look for a new council in November to straighten out this mess that you have created.
Next, we'll hear from Carmen Johnson. And then before Marvin Reinhardt speaks, I'll call the next five people. Good evening.
Good evening, Ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. It's great to be in front of you this evening. I come on behalf of the Troy Claussen Republican Forum, and I have a press release to read. The Troy Claussen Republican Forum endorses a no vote on August 2nd for the Troy tax hike. Published Troy, Michigan, July 9th, 2011, the Troy Claussen Republican Forum, the longest-running Republican club in Troy, is officially endorsing a no vote on the upcoming tax hike. Forum President Barbara Harrell says, "In keeping with the Republican principles of lower taxes and fiscal responsibility, we believe it is inappropriate to raise taxes on the hard-working citizens of Troy. In these difficult economic times, Troy leaders must work with less money, like the rest of us, and stop asking the citizens to make up for their lack of prudence and good judgment in spending. It's hard to believe that our Troy police are being reduced, but our City Council is using my tax dollars to run yet another library tax increase vote," adds Forum Vice President Carmen Johnson. "We need common sense, responsible, conservative leadership, not a tax increase." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before Mr. Reinhardt starts, before Mr. Reinhardt starts, I'll call the next five people in this order. Paul Beck, Richard Peters, Marty Orlovsky, James Savage, and Gerard Stager. Mr. Reinhardt, come forward, please. Good evening.
Morning, Madam Mayor. The thing that sort of gets me sometimes is how you guys are very inconsistent. In this last summer sometime, or maybe in the fall, an Asian woman wanted to do some type of Asian school next to the Somerset Gazette in that parking lot. First thing out of you people's mouth was, "You're trying to raise your price of your property so you can sell it." Now, in one presentation, and this is the second time, one you guys approved that furniture warehouse over on Stevenson, the guy could change his rating from that to now he can have retail store there, which increased the price of the property. Now you have another property, another white male, by the way, this was an Asian woman asking for help, okay? Bam, he got it. So just remember out there, all you yes-vote people, how they treat minorities in this city. Now, I also like to bring up the fact that Sanctuary Lake now has a bar. Now, what doesn't have a bar in this city? Okay, churches bring out bars in this city. We got this Scottish thing over there on Stevenson, that's from a church. So, there used to be people who's worried about the city of Troy is going to be called bar.com because of all the bar drinking, but now we're bringing bars in all over the place. In fact, this guy says, "I'm going to bring drinking in the city," and you guys said, "That's a good idea." Now, I can't believe that this city is going to bank itself on the drinking tax when the state's going to lower the tax, okay? Now, this is the Troy Times, okay? This is what happened last week according to Troy. This is what really happened in the city of Troy. The rumors of Kmart building coming back to the city of Troy. City of Troy's businesses getting all types of awards for hiring people in this city. In fact, there's a Troy Trust page Facebook that said, "The city of Troy eliminated 150 city workers, but no money for the library." How can that be? Eliminate 150 jobs and there's no money? Because of the crooks in this city. Now, I'm the only Reinhardt in the book, you can call me and I'll tell you who they are. Have a good day.
Next, we'll hear from Paul Beck. Good evening, Mr. Beck.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'd like to bring up an anniversary of the third year and a 2.5% salary increase that was started three years ago and costing us $72,000 a year, every year it's in effect. That brings it up to $216,000 that we are paying our salary employees. Number two is that everybody seems to be taking pay cuts except the command chiefs or the command officers in the city of Troy. Well, they take a pay freeze. I would like to enjoy a pay freeze also. I never got one. I never, my prices have always gone down for the last two or three years because of hard times. A number, the other thing is, everybody's taking pay cuts or pay freezes. I don't see the city manager coming up with a pay freeze or a pay cut. And another thing, too, the DDA. Guess who happens to be on the DDA? You, Madam Mayor, and our infamous city manager. And you've run that into the ground also, just like you've run into library, Hooters, and a few other things. I would suggest that some people on council should get on the right side of the law, or not the law, but the right side of the people, and vote for what they want and not what you want. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Peters. Mr. Peters, you're in front of the gentleman in front of you.
Good evening, Council, folks of Troy, Mayor. First, I want to say the no votes are, I commend them for getting out there, you know, doing their work, and I'd hope that the yes folks get out and be competitive as well. Obviously, they're the usual bringing up their hearsay facts and stuff like that, and I was a bit struck by a sign this week that said a book learning thing that was going to happen on the date of the voting thing, and that sort of struck me out. I went back there later and it was taken down, and I don't know who put that up, but I found that pretty, kind of alarming at first. As far as taxes goes, first, if the Republican Congress has its way, we'll go back to 1929, when Hoover believed that you should balance the budget on the backs of the poor and the lower-middle class. I believe a vote for the public library is a vote for America, and I also believe for the American people. I believe also that it appears not only to the rich and poor, but to all types of people in ages. I believe that a functioning library is a pillar in our community, and that's what we need now, is a good, strong community. I would also hope that this is a first step to bringing the great city of Troy back to the top where it belongs. I also believe that Troy, like America, has its best days ahead of us. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Marty Orlovsky, is that correct, sir?
Very good pronunciation, yes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me tonight. Marty Orlovsky here to represent the Troy Chamber of Commerce. It is the Troy Chamber's mission to promote an environment that builds successful businesses and a thriving community. That being said, the Board of Directors of the Troy Chamber, per the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee, has approved a resolution to support the proposed library millage. This resolution is a result of a thorough evaluation and the acknowledgement that the library is essential to the long-term economic viability of Troy. This support, however, also recognizes that the library must reinvent itself and pursue the most efficient operational methods possible. As a result, support for the library millage does not stand alone. The Troy Chamber of Commerce supports the library millage with the expectation that the Troy Public Library will use the time given by passage of the five-year millage to conduct a strategic planning process that will evaluate its business model. This planning process should take into account the library's functions have changed in recent years and that the Troy Public Library needs to adapt intentionally and effectively to these changes. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Savage? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schilling, good evening, members of council. Two years ago, council approved a management proposal to close the library, lay off police officers, drastically reduce personnel, and curtail services. It was generally accepted that sacrifices from all sectors would be needed to meet the economic challenges faced in this city. Yet, you continued to fund the DDA so that they could continue to raise money on Big Beaver, and you have not closed the door on the Transit Center. Now, on several occasions, you, Mayor Schilling, and Councilwoman Kerwin have indicated that the Transit Center has been no cost to the city, yet you refuse to answer specific questions in that regard. I ask again, how much have Troy taxpayers paid for engineering studies and fees, lobbyists and consultants, staff time, including legal department time and expenses, and promotional costs and brochures, et cetera? We have been told that certain monies can only be used for specific projects, but who created this network of funds? And in the end, did it or did it not come out of taxpayers' pockets? I have a paper that states that in the fiscal year 2009, 2010, one consulting company was paid $38,140.50 to work on the Transit Center. Did our city manager pay this out of his most generous remuneration? Is that the bottom?
I think the clock was, was it, is that three minutes? Okay.
I have one paragraph, Madam Mayor. If not, I would ask that I can pass this to someone else, it's just one paragraph to finish.
We're going to limit people to three minutes, Mr. Savage, so it's up to you if you wish to do that. Okay. Mr. Stager, before you start speaking, I'm going to call on the next five people, so don't start yet, Mr. Stager, okay? Christopher Kaluza, Bruce Bloomingdale, Fred Eckout, Thomas Burke, and Susan Martin. Would those people come up in that order, please? There you go. Mr. Stager, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm asking that everyone please vote no on the third millage increase election that has been put to steer in Troy, because we have more than enough money to keep the library open for a long time with no new taxes. Councilman Fleming and Councilman Howelak submitted a budget that would have kept the funding for the library at $2.4 million a year, its current level, and kept reserves at over 15% of budget, more than what the City Council had requested. We have the money for the library. We need you on council to get along with each other better, to listen to each other better, and to realize you are stewards of our taxpayer money, and our tax dollars are hard-earned, it's a really difficult economy. We have the money for the library, we had it for the entire fiscal year, we have it for a time beyond the next fiscal year. We don't need this tax increase because we have the money to keep the library open with no new taxes. If we pass this tax increase, what will happen if we do need a millage increase in the future? We'll already have shot part of her wad, so to speak. And this will be an operating millage, there's not even a guarantee in this, in the city charter that we'll go to the library, but it'll be an operating millage and count up toward the 10 mil limit. It would be a horrible thing to pass this millage increase because we don't need it. We have money and reserves that have been piling up. We had over nine million, then over 10 million, it's heading over $12 million, and the reason that it's piling up in the bank is because it's there for the library, and council's withholding it from the library. And it really isn't right because we want library and with other essential services that we have in Troy. It would be a very bad thing to pass this millage because it makes it harder to sell your house in Troy if our taxes are higher. It makes it tougher to keep business in Troy, let alone attract new business in Troy, and we have a high vacancy rate, even though in Troy we're blessed with having one of the highest property tax bases in the entire state. But it hurts us to have a millage we don't need because we do have the money, it's been brought up again and again, you can see in the comprehensive annual financial report, we've got the money for the library, and we shouldn't raise taxes for something when we don't need the money, when we might need it later. We have a city manager who, you're able in Troy to take a pension when you still work, the city manager takes a pension even though he's still working full-time. He's getting over $207,000 in cash compensation, the governor of Michigan's salary is set at $177,000. The Obama White House revealed recently that their highest-paid employees get about Define contribution percentage is three to four times what we get in the private sector. People should have good paying benefits. It's not to say that they shouldn't have the paying benefits, we have some excellent employees here in Troy, but we need to be reasonable, not to keep coming to the voters for a tax increase. We don't need it, and please vote no. And thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council.
Next, we'll hear from Christopher. Christopher, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Feel free to adjust the mic.
Yeah, of course. It's good to see you all again. I'm going to try to keep my comments very brief, but I will say, when I'm at Purdue, I speak very highly of my city. I'm very proud to say that I am from Troy. It is a very vibrant community, and it is a community that has served me very well as I was growing up. But now, as I look and see that there is this tax increase, I have to say that I'm very concerned about the future of the city. It is my hope one day to come back, return here, and serve the city in some capacity or another. But with this tax increase, I have to say, it's going to make it more difficult to do so. I hope one day to become a homeowner here, and if at all possible, to raise a family here. But when I look at the budget and I see that there's $12 million that is being untouched and that can be used to keep the library open, and you aren't using it for that, and instead you're going to a tax increase to keep the library open, it makes me question the direction of the management of the city. And it also makes me question the health of this city when I do eventually look to see where I'm going to settle down to live my life. So, once again, as I did last time, I urge the council to please reevaluate the budget, try to find other ways to fund the library. I do understand that there are other proposals, but they were shot down quite quickly without really being looked into, and to find other ways, other than a tax increase, to keep the library open and to keep this city fiscally sound. I thank you, and I hope you guys have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Bruce Bloomingdale. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have with me a copy of the latest TCU information sheet regarding the city of Troy's $12 million reserve fund. Been talked about quite a bit tonight. Sheet indicates that the city has habitually, quote, "greatly over-allocated," unquote, or inflated the amount of money put into this reserve slash rainy day slash emergency fund, but no reason is given regarding the reason for putting more money into this fund than is necessary. But it's inferred that the library could and should be financed out of this reserve fund. Now, I believe that most of us understand the need for and the purpose of a financial emergency fund. Most financial advisors suggest that individuals or families or cities have liquid assets or cash on hand that equals three to six months of their monthly expenses. The financial advisors for the city, like the ICMA, recommended the same thing. Recommended to keep a reserve fund to cover emergencies like a water main break, a violent storm that causes expensive damage, or anything else that comes up that's not included in the budget. No one, no one, except the Troy Citizens United, recommends using emergency funds for general operating expenses, like the library. It takes approximately $3 million a year to operate the Troy library. At that rate, the emergency reserve we have now would be $12 million would be zero in four years. There are at least two other good reasons for the city to maintain an emergency reserve fund. First, it protects a good credit rating. Second, it helps prevent the possibility of the state pulling, putting in an emergency financial manager in control of our city. I'm sure the Troy Citizens United have the best of intentions, but their solutions to the city's financial problems don't make sense to me. Now, I'm conservative by nature, so maintaining an emergency reserve fund makes sense to me. I try to maintain enough cash on hand at home to keep from being forced into doing something stupid, like using a credit card if my air conditioner breaks down or something of that nature. And I'm also suspicious of anyone who tells me they can pull a rabbit, think library, out of a hat, especially when they've said twice before and failed to do both times. Now, in closing, I'd like to say, if anything I've said is factual in error, please correct me in your response to public comment. I would like to hear from each and every one of you. I've got a little bit more time. As far as I'm concerned, the city manager we have earns every dollar that we pay him, and he's worth it. I'm not so sure about the governor.
Mr. Eckhart is, Eckout is next.
Eckout, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council, City Management. I'm a 25-year resident and business owner, and I'd like to say that in all good conscience, I cannot support the library millage increase. in all good conscience, I cannot support the library millage increase. Like most other residents, I like the library. I believe it performs a vital community function, is part of the Troy culture, and is appreciated by everybody in the community. However, the millage increase is unnecessary. About two months ago, Councilman Howrak advanced, and Councilman Fleming seconded an alternative budget that used a small portion of the fund balance to illustrate that library funding could be achieved. I'd like to commend those councilmen for their initiative in that matter and compliment them for rendering a true community service in that regard. Unfortunately, that proposal was quickly voted down with no discussion. The other problem with the millage is that not only is it unnecessary, but it flies in the face of the spending problem that the city has with consultants, expensive employee salaries and contracts, lucrative buyout offers, the Transit Center, and other spending. So, to advocate a tax increase without thorough discussion of the alternatives is a disservice to the residents, and I simply don't support it. I was on the city of Birmingham's website the other day, and in their budget, they had an organization chart, and at the top of the page was a box for the residents, and to the left and to the right beneath that box were the City Council and City Management. The fact that the residents have not received a full vetting from the Council on this particular issue is a disservice to the community. And should the millage not pass, I just don't believe that the library will be closed. I think you'll find a way to keep it open. That's what the residents want. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Thomas Burke.
Good evening. Just to the second previous speaker, thank you for the TCU advertisement. In our April Town Hall, we explained all those comments about the budget. They must not have sunk in, so we're having another Town Hall this Thursday, Community Center, 7:00. The community is invited, and we'll explain it once again. 7:00 this Thursday in Room 305, I believe it is, at the Community Center. Comments I'd like to make tonight are regarding this flyer that the city sent out, which I believe is factually incorrect. This ballot proposal that's out for .7 mils is a funding issue. This document says, it has a yes and no box. Everybody here in Troy's probably seen it. The yes, it says, "A yes vote means there will be library operations for 55 hours per week." Is this the Ed Kempen ordinance or charter amendment we're talking about? Where in the ballot proposal does it say the city will be required to operate a library for 55 hours a week, or 50 hours a week, or 40, or 20, or 10? It's not in there. That's an operational issue. That is the legal argument that the city used against Ed Kempen in the December lawsuit. It is not pertinent to the ballot issue. Neither is the no box. The no box says, "A no vote means the library will close on August the 5th." Nothing could be further from the truth. There is nothing in this ballot proposal that requires the city to close the library on August 5th. It is...that is a council decision that, in fact, council has not even made. There is nothing in any minutes of any meeting of this body, because I've read them all through, where council has passed a resolution to close the library on August 5th. But that's a council decision that you can make. It is not resulting of this ballot proposal. All a no vote means is there will not be a dedicated millage, and that the funding will have to come from the general fund. We should not be sending slanted propaganda like this out. Detroit deserves better. One last comment. What council has done is passed a budget funding the library for $735,000 for this current year, which is more than enough funding to get it far beyond August 5th. So, unless council takes some action, or unless somehow management of the city can arbitrarily close the library, the library will not close on August 5th. Thank you.
Before...Mrs. Martin, come up, but before you start speaking and we start the clock, I'm going to call the last people that have signed up. If anybody wishes to speak and they have not signed up, I ask you to go out and sign up at the kiosk, please. The next people that signed up is Ellen Huderek and John Witt. Mrs. Martin, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. The first thing I want to do is kind of share what's been going on with the YES campaign. We have had so much positivity in our campaign, and we've had enough volunteers that we're having yet an additional volunteer meeting Thursday at our library from 7:00 to 8:30. Like I said, a groundswell of support from all ages and stages of people in our great city, all political backgrounds. We are not pigeonholed into any label. In fact, we are very multi-partisan in our membership, which has been wonderful knowing that everyone can come together in support of this valuable resource. Well over 300 residents have been physically helping, meaning coming to our meetings to be trained and activated, to go out and canvass, to make phone calls, to place signs, to help us collect money and so forth. And yet, there are countless hundreds of others on email lists, on Facebook, supporting us from home, sending out their own email distribution. So, it has been amazing, and the spirit of all these people has been amazing. I know that you get pounded week after week by the same repetitive rhetoric that is filled with inaccuracies, and my work on this campaign has been the polar opposite. People willing to go out and do what every resident needs to do, and that is to seek out the truth. We are honor-bound to find out the truth behind something. We cannot, in good faith, continue to repeat, perpetuate, and pass on the false and misleading information that I hear every week. I was chuckling tonight, because now, six months a year after hearing all the same stuff, it's ludicrous that people continue to say the same things. And I've been accused of using big words a lot, because I am a teacher. I teach vocabulary. I expect my eighth-grade students to know the words I teach them. Here's one: contradiction. We had Mr. Nolenberg here today telling us the best practices that Troy has been lauded for by Governor Snyder's team, that we will hopefully not be penalized, as Mr. Zurlag asked, because of all the good stuff we've done. Our fleet crew, it is amazing. The award-winning schools, the award-winning library. Folks, we have the lowest tax rate in Oakland County, and if they can repeat all their inaccuracies, I'll repeat again: lowest taxes around. Passing this tax is not going to hurt us. Closing a library will decrease your property values. Not paying for that library will hurt us. We have to seek truth. SaveTroy.org has hundreds of pieces of information that have been vetted by the residents of this city, not just by one or two people, not by the same crew that come up every week and say it to you. We have gone out and done the hard work of finding the information, and we will show you how to verify it yourself. Don't take my word for it. Go verify it yourself and find out. SaveTroy.org. Thank you.
Ellen Huderek is next.
Good evening. And in all the middle of the Faldera, this appears. I don't know if it's real, not real, satire. It's horrible. It's an example of the polarization we've seen in the community, seen in this community, and it's disturbing. It's extremely disturbing. There's a reason that this has happened. It's not a mismanaged city or an overpaid city manager. No one in the city has ever, nor will they ever, make more than the governor. These aren't the issues. It's a subversive behavior that goes on. We have a majority council that votes and says something should be so, and there's a subversive behavior that goes on that thwarts it. I want to challenge council members in these coming weeks, as we get close to council dates. If you are going to send a letter, if you're going to do a communication, perhaps this time, talk to the library director. Check with people who have all the information. Make sure your letter isn't filled with inaccuracies. I'll be kind. We need to rise above the misinformation and the game-playing. Mr. Stager comes up and repeats information, misinformation, talks about transparency being necessary. I watched him land a piece of paper with all sorts of misinformation in an engagement session. Took a man three times to get him to identify himself. Mr. Burke continues to come up with misinformation, and we, please, stop. It's a library. It will cost an average of $75...$70 annually for a homeowner. Tell me what we get by voting no. It's probably not a book-burning party, but it's a shrink wrap and a shut-up of a library and a staff that leaves while we figure it out. It's unnecessary. This is an unnecessary fight. The budget was fully vetted. It went through several months of discussion. The budget that Councilman Howrak and Councilman Fleming presented was minutes before the council meeting, where they voted on a budget. You truly expected them to vote for something that hadn't been properly vetted with staff and the rest of the council members? I'm astounded. What do the residents want? They want a library. I'm with Sue. There's hundreds of us out there working, and we are all for this millage, as were five of you. Six of you even voted to put it on in August election. It'd be great if seven of you stood behind it. That's what the residents want: one time of managing the spirit of the community in a positive way.
Next, we'll hear from John Witt, our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There was a headline in the Troy Times about a month ago. It said, "Council Says Residents Don't Trust Us," and that was one of the most accurate headlines I've seen in a long time. So, let's kind of diagnose that and dissect that. Why don't the residents trust you as City Council? Well, this really started about almost two years to this date. We were hiring a new city manager. There was a lot of opportunities to move this city forward, to get someone who was responsible, to get someone who would be innovative, forward-thinking, somebody who could bring the community together and be able to control all these tough budgetary times. Instead, not only did the council bring back the former city manager, they also allowed him to continue receiving his city pension while working for the city again. Retired while working. And you wonder why the residents don't trust you? Once again, let's look at pay and benefits beyond the city manager. We have the top 20 executives in the city in total compensation making over $3.6 million. Thirteen of them make more and pay than the governor. Once again, you wonder why the residents don't trust you? We have 401K contributions, 13 percent for 3 percent contribution by the employee, over 4 to 1. Is anybody getting that in the private sector? Are any of us residents that don't trust you getting that? Almost none. And you wonder, once again, why the residents don't trust you? We continue with the Transit Center nowhere. A Transit Center that even Birmingham, the innovator of this project, dropped out of because they realized in these tough times, you can't be spending money on such a risky deal. Yet, again, this council insists on continuing another sanctuary-like, doomed-to-fail project, and you wonder why the residents don't trust you. So, you're right, the residents don't trust you, but the solution is not to go spend $400,000 on some more consultants or a communications team. Changing the message won't be the problem. The message will be the same...the message may change, but the problem will remain. The residents still won't trust you. You know why? Because this council doesn't understand the residents. That's very simple. This management doesn't understand the residents. Out here in the real ward, outside of City Hall, residents are facing tough times. They're paying more for their health care. They're losing pensions. They're getting their 401Ks eliminated. And once again, we see more of the same at the city, more of the same, more and more and more. And you expect us to pay more taxes? We are not going to do that. Once again, November 2nd, we won't trust you. You know what? So, yes, the residents don't trust you, and they're not going to vote for your tax increase. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak. That concludes those that signed up to speak. We'll go to response for public comment, and the first thing I'd like to indicate before I call on other Members of Council is that this evening, in the back of the room, you see some of our police officers. They are here because we have an agenda item to ratify the contract for 2008 to 2013, the extension to 2015, with concessions from all of these individuals. We have a tentative agreement with nine communication people, which should be forthcoming to council for the July 25th meeting, which means, ladies and gentlemen, every single employee in this city has taken at least a 10 percent concession. Every single one, when we receive the one with the...for the nine people. That was asked for by City Council and achieved. The information that indicated that the city ma-